Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is our.
For the most part, we are aiming for a flat budget for next year. Um, excuse me, with the exception of a couple areas, um, transportation was obviously from the big ticket item, the shared tool. Um, and so we are going to increase them next year some. Um, also custodial, just with the, the increase in cost on paperwork. That was an area that we are going to have to increase for students versus doing a percentage. Um, and that's based on enrollment numbers each year. And then we go through each month and, and put in what's been spent. Um, if they're over, we're trying to look at, you know, what's causing that overage? If it's, um, a distribution cost or something like that. Um, and so that's, that's really kind of helped us track the spending dollar for dollar this year, uh, and to look at exactly where everything is going. We've done a little one collection.
You guys good? All right. I didn't see assistance for this professional development type of programs, teaching and learning.
I mean, I brought a few things for to be reminded. I brought a copy of our in-service together that Mr. Sappington had already done before he left, so you could kind of see what's planned for, and that. And I also brought a copy of a document we've been working on, which is the district-wide mental health plans. We'll talk about that, too. And so as far as professional development goes, Mr. Sappington worked really hard and did a great job of getting that completely planned before he left, which we know, you know, a day before school starts, that shows on our mind, making sure they have everything ready, everything ready for back-to-school night. So, um, doing some extra literacy training as well, so along with our literacy plan that we're working on, um, specific to secondary sites and then specific to elementary sites. So we're excited about that as well. So you can look over that, and we'll be moving on that. Federal programs, um, I have a lot to learn about federal programs. So, uh, Marie has already taught me a ton. Um, and so Sarah has been taking those plans, and she and I are going to finish this up before July, putting all that together so that we have a comprehensive pre-K through 12 literacy plan, um, very systematic, um, kind of rooted in some evidence-based practices, bringing in a new, not really curriculum, but a program. And actually, it's not new, some of our teachers have been using it called early reading that we're bringing in at the elementary levels. We do a copy of our district mental health plan. So this is something that, uh, we learned about here kind of recently, and the state is requiring a documented mental health plan for every school district. I am very excited about this because our counselors at all four sites work extremely hard to meet the mental health needs of their students, but we have never, to my knowledge, had a district-wide comprehensive plan. So the state provided a template, which is what we used. We took it and we kind of plugged all of our information into it, the things that I can swear on all the time, we can just keep moving forward with the good work that's been done. So you can kind of look over that. I think that the, I think the state will approve it because, like I said, we use their template, that basement. Uh, but if anything else might change, we certainly, uh, title line. So on Wednesday, actually, Dr. Wilkins, Mr. Sappington and I are presenting at the Costa Conference, um, sort of our schools approach the title line. So we have a presentation that we have prepared and we will get that Wednesday afternoon. And we're sharing, like, we're sharing all of our documents, all of our things that we created, hope that we created, hopefully that some other schools can benefit from some of the, and a little, um, I don't know, we just, we're not really sure how that was going to work out. But I am so thrilled because we have found two candidates who are perfect for the buildings that they're going into and whose needs are a little bit different. And I think we're very, very fortunate to find two people who are going to be able to go ride in and continue the really, really good work that's already being done. So all my names do that, I'm sure there's a ton of that. I'll introduce Keesha Bell first. Keesha is coming to us from Salasaw Public Schools. Uh, she has worked, she's a long, long, um, history in education, she's done a lot of different things, but most recently she's been working as a reading specialist and literacy coach. And Dr. Wilkins and I wrote a survey and sent to the lower elementary staff here. She lives in the same community that we all do. We talked to a lot of people, we all knew Hillary. And the things that kept coming up is that she was super positive, um, very supportive, described as kind of like a cheerleader, like very energetic, uh, which is what we were looking for, for the upper, somebody that could just keep the positive culture up, could keep supporting those teachers who are doing an amazing job. We're really, really excited to have Hillary join us as well. Questions, honey?
So the AC units that were put in when that building was virtually done were oversized. And so what happens is the air wasn't circulating too quickly enough, um, so we had these terrible mold problems and moisture problems in that building. So adding, um, changing out all these AC units, adding these big air handling units will, uh, the building will be more efficient, will be, uh, better heated and cooled, and the air will be, um, condensed better. So that is like ninety-nine percent completed. Um, yeah, so the, so they had to dig that up and fix that, but that's all taken care of. And, uh, this is the upstairs above that, you can see it's all nice and clean, new piping, new hot water tank there in the back, um, more efficient. I don't know, we've got the, the Moxing here on the left that wasn't there before, so our custodial staff can prepare their cleaning stuff upstairs instead of having to try to carry buckets of water upstairs and mop up there. Nothing else, I will be, um, technology, I think they're going to do pickup and drop-off tenant, uh, like Chromebooks, if someone has a Chromebook that goes out, they can drop it off and do exchanging there. So, uh, the lady hired last month, um, to help with enrollment and technology, that's where her and Dawn are going to be housed. And so they'll kind of go back and forth with technology and enrollment, depending on kind of the business at the time. So that is, that was up to date, so that's what it looks like right now. Um, so they still have some work to do in there to get that right. Just talk a little bit about what Dawn, what you were saying on the, uh, budget situation. So projecting, you know, there's a pretty significant increase, um, at the state level for revenue to the schools. For our district, it equates to a little over, projecting a little over a million dollars, so about, I think a million thirty-three thousand. So of that, um, the teacher raises, I don't know, teachers in fifteen-plus, uh, years of experience, which I think is pretty amazing.
Travis, let the record show Travis Meyer, Scott Biser. Thank you, Travis.
Um, so with that, it's going to cost about seven hundred thousand dollars for those raises, which leaves us about three hundred, a little over three hundred thousand dollars left over. Some of that will get, um, coming in, um, we've, uh, what was it, fifty-two thousand, I think is what they're projecting for us for rent by money. Is that right? So, you know, an additional fifty thousand dollars we can spend on anything building product related, um, which again will help with just some of these little projects that we need to handle, um, which we've done, we've, we had some leftover borrowing money that we're able to do some of these little projects along the way. But this will help close just to see if, um, in case that, in case there is a threat next year, um, we'll, we'll have a plan in place on how we approach that, um, just to make sure that we can, that we stay, um, in a good place financially. Oh, athletics. I don't know if we'll pull that back up. Um, I have a little athletic presentation, but I will, I will wait until maybe next month and we have to talk about that a little bit. Um, just kind of how we end it out the year with athletics, but I'll, I want to hold off on that. No, so, thank you. Um, we are, you'll notice only agenda we are discussing, um, or, the discussion that's happening with custodial staff. Um, the way we've done it, um, over the past over a year or so, I think July has done a great job of kind of getting the best bang for our buck from a couple of these people. Um, so we've had teachers or other employees, um, working basically out of school for a couple hours, cleaning certain areas. Hopefully it will work out better for us. We've done the math on it, it's going to cost about the same, you're talking about the same, virtually the same number of man-hours, um, but just having that level of consistency kind of in each building as opposed to having a whole bunch of people just cleaning up as well.
Is this in addition to what already is in place with our custodial staff?
No, so this will be replacing the people that were doing the short pack.
Right, right.
Yes, but we'll keep, so we'll still have like a seven to three, eight to four.
Sure, actually they've done their place.
Right, and then we will also then have budgeted on our department budgets, which is the sheet that I had passed around. We ended up spending, I think, about eighty thousand more than what we had budgeted on that sheet. Um, but that budget was kind of based on the last, it was an estimate based on four years of, of data. Well, in that four years, you've got COVID year, you've got the year before COVID, which was when everything was a little cheaper, and then you've got the post-COVID year there. We come back at a, at one-twenty-five, um, to kind of give them something to, to shoot for as far as being fiscally responsible. Um, and, and, and all of our guys did a great job in, in looking for ways to save money. Um, I think July has contacted everybody.
Pretty good? All right. Section three, consent agenda, this item has been approved by one more motion unless any foremember, so I wish to have a center proposal on any of our all of these items. We've included in the consent, item A, discussion and considerations for the approval of attendance of the following meetings to the Board of Education, the regular meeting that was held on May eighth of two thousand twenty-three, and the special meeting that was held made activity funds. Item D is discussion and consideration for the approval of the following activity fund transfer since nine seventy-seven, and discussion and consideration for the approval of the following out-of-state or overnight field trip request. High School FFA Officer Richard to Broken Cove from June thirtieth to July second. Lulugah High School varsity, uh, to cheer camp at Lulugah, excuse me, Oklahoma University.
It says sixteen, seventeen. Look down close to the bottom, it says, I think it's Trafara LLC for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So we purchased, maybe you can tell, we purchased, uh, through Trafara some technology, some Chromebooks.
Yes.
How many of those have we did?
Like four hundred.
Okay. We, we approve the consent agenda items A through B as stated.
Thank you. Prepare discussion. Hearing none, vote please.
Yes.
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 Record show that consent agenda was approved. Section four, administrative. So item A, recognition.
We're footing to that.
So, yeah, it's the, uh, computerized, uh, software that allows us, or allows our teachers to monitor what the students are doing. So, yeah, they've, there was a savings, you saved this.
Almost like ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, off of what we were using previously. So our tech department has done a great job in going out and finding, you better, people are better by, it's cheaper. Under our elementary's.
That's elementary's use it for reading.
It's a good program, a good program.
We will entertain a motion on item B.
Move, if we approve the contract with, that sounds starting for the two thousand.
It goes through engine duty, so this is the licensing for that.
We entertain a motion on item C. Move to approve the agreement, understanding it's arising. State. Discussion.
Don't only have any extreme needs in stacking right now, um, we can address that when everyone arrives, but as of right now, basically this is the.
We entertain a motion on item D.
Make motion on Wiprodo TPS school board policy for FFA, send on Wiprodo TPS school board policy for FFA CD dash medical matrix changes for all sites, but I didn't get the lower or the upper because I wonder if new principals have the opportunity to look at this before we approve it. Um, so what I would, uh, request or recommend is that we approve the ones that we have, which would be the middle school and high school. Um, and then in July, we can get the, um, the elementary's, um, just the matrix, matrices that you can.
Twenty-four school year.
Do, what do you guys want to talk about? Maybe.
We use the WDA, um, for a long, long time now. It's what we, it's a great statistic for the RSA, so it meets the measures of, um, deciding whether or not a student in third grade is, is ready to move on or trade, if they do not pass the state test for reading, we can use the WDA as a measure to go ahead and progress them. So, um, we give it, sometimes we see that their test scores go down a little bit because it doesn't, doesn't have like animated figures, nothing describes it, and have read it completely themselves. And so sometimes you'll see a little bit of a drop in that score, and it's great for us to be able to look back and see this child has had a sustained history of growth or of struggling. And so we kind of know how the upper knows better how to meet their needs when they come in just having to look at a number. So it, it's a great assessment, it's been really great for us.
They're typically get their, are these, or this is the one that everybody uses?
There are several that you can choose from. For RSA, there are seven approved assessments that you can use, and I think they all probably have things that are great to them. And we've decided to stick with the WDA. We have looked at other ones that other districts around us use. We've stuck with the WDA because it does give you that long-term picture. So by the time they get to third grade year and say they don't show proficiency on that test, that's a really hard decision to make. And what we like is that this particular assessment shows you how have they struggling right now or have they been struggling, which is really important when you're going to make that decision whether or not to test them. And sometimes when that testing comes in and looks a little different than you expected it to, um, you can go to the N WDA to look and see, again, is this like a right now problem this child is having, or has this been one that maybe has, um, cycled through periods of struggle or that kind of thing? We use it a lot for that purpose as well.
So you can say if a kid had a bad.
Yeah.
Month, but.
Yeah.
Other issues a lot, you can say that, that, not someone else.
Yes, absolutely.
N WDA, that, that, not someone else.
Yes, absolutely.
N WDA, as far as it used to be called, is more of a short, short-term shot, we use it for, um, the departments. So we have essential standards and we identify those, and then you can build really short, ten, fifteen minutes assessment. But in the VA, it takes hours and days to do it, so we were losing two to three weeks of instruction time to continue to do it in the VA.
Now, it's worse here. We entertain a motion on item H.
Make, make a motion on, we grant kindergarten statutory act authority to the following RCB, H account, activity account, and we have three, four, two, three.
Start your remarks. Prepare discussion. Hearing none, vote please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Item A is approved. Item I, recommendation consideration action of approving the quote from O S A G for workers' compensation insurance, workers' compensation.
Has definitely been better, we do have, have been evaluated by the school owners before they actually send for a care, you know, but some of them, it's necessarily being taken care of, and it's been better. Just a rough current weather for the last two years.
We entertain a motion on item I.
We approve the quote from O S A G for workers' compensation insurance for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
State.
Us name Mike with that. Us name Mike with that. Which means.
It's not on the agenda, so I can't.
We don't always have that.
We entertain a motion on item J.
Do approve contract of vaccine from two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
Provider that, uh, we're in the, in the OSEC consortium. So our insurance program rights went up about seventy-five thousand, is that right?
We, we know it's within that line.
So, yeah, we are going from a ten thousand dollar deductible, uh, to a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, um, we're going to drop that, uh, yeah, there's, I think, thirty-one. Um, then, uh, the interest premium would be, um, at the, at the bottom, it has the premiums that we've paid over the last several years, and our insurance premium has about doubled in the last, um, two, three years, which is, is.
No, I believe twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we were at three hundred thousand, and then last year we jumped to, um, four fifty. And then this year, if we step with the same deductible, we'd be just over five seventy.
Accident. You know, say by the time a girl head through, it's a hospital stay, five surgeries, you know, multiple people. You just want to make sure you have.
And let's see, when I don't mind you, Melanie, asking her, she's been very eager to write back.
Yeah, because medical costs has just gone up, it's not like, well, it's even five years ago.
Well, and I mean, part of that is, is kind of what they told us, is the increase in the premium is not just the cost.
One, whatever.
Basically, it's per event, not per structure.
But even like a litigation, if you have a situation with a teacher or whatever, that there's four students.
If it's one occurrence, then it's still one, it's just not one.
That's per that industry standard of the same issue. I just. The trust is based in.
But. Uh, on bill, on bill liability, hundred, one million dollar limit for.
Okay.
B to basically join that, the consortium, I guess, the consortium, and then L would be to put the quote as stated in here, which we would go with the, uh, twenty-five thousand, no, sorry. Yeah, with the deductible, which the cost would then be five thirty-five, two twenty-three.
I entertain a motion on item K. So. Discussion. Hearing none, vote please.
Yes.
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 Item L is approved. Item N, we're to consider take action on motion approving the renewal of the sublease agreement dated January first of two thousand twenty between District Rogers County Educational Facilities Authority for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four as required provisions of the, of the agreement.
So we maintain this agreement between the district and the.
Hearing none, vote please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item N is approved. Section five is personnel. I may have proposed executive session to discuss reservation, hiring of personnel and more extravagant assignments pursuant to twenty-five O S X, three oh seven B one and seven of the open meeting hall. I'd just be discussed other reservations that's here. Ryan, Tony Sappington, and the pair of Cody and Perry. Record show, the board is in, this is executive session.
New two thousand twenty-three school year. Clinton, hair, little school teacher and coach effective the end of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. And May, athletic director effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Kristy York, field office principal effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Kinsey Brader, athletic administrative assistant effective the end of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Shane Doyle, the head boys basketball coaching duties effective June fifth of twenty twenty-three. Maggie Calco, pre-K eight, effective June first of twenty twenty-three. BJ Calco, teacher assistant and coach effective the end of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Tara Schelfel, professional effective June first of twenty twenty-three. Joel Rizwal, upper elementary. Are you sure you will need? Vote please.
Yes.
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 Item E is approved. Item F, motion and vote to employ or not employ the following for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Julie Liz, parent professional, Jeff Slater Brown, Sherry Hutchinson, upper elementary principal, special education director. Let's do that list. I'm going to re-employ Julie Liz, parent, fellow contestant, waiter. For upper elementary principal for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. For upper elementary principal for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Asia Bell, lower elementary principal for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Kristen Cagendall, upper elementary teacher on temporary contract for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Rebecca Nutter, transfer from the high school admin assistant to athletic activity admin assistant. Stacy Campbell, custodian for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Minnie Donovan, custodian for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Angie Hilson, custodian for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Becky Boothink, Dylan Murphy, Eliza Spain, Stacy Campbell for teaching additional high school math classes for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Let me get previous of the designments and contracts as listed in the IMH. Say. Vote please.
Yes.
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 Uh, new business, Dr. Gold.
So we do have a letter of resignation from Kevin McLeary from her teaching and coaching position.
But take just a second, tell us about your life, your kids, your family, your dogs, your hobbies, and what brought you to do that? Mr. Dixon, you're starting from front row, so we start.
Rudy Dixon, we live here in New York, my wife's a little school principal. We've been here for twelve years. Our kids were basically, we moved here twelve years ago, so they basically went through the system itself and been very good. I've been in education for thirty years. So I'm all about education. My family was educators. Dad coached and taught, mom taught, sister's still a principal herself. And so athletics has been a part of my life forever. It's very important to me and again, a lot of you guys know me as well because the kids are your kids, my kids, all went to school together, so I was very proud of being.
Of course, me, I just finished my almost thirteenth year teaching. I work from Alwasso, well, not from Alwasso, I work from the Tulsa area. I'm coming from Alwasso, I live in Stone Canyon. My husband, this is my husband, Justin, he's also a teacher. He coaches girls wrestling and football. We have a four-year-old daughter. Um, let's see, we spent time at Union before we came to Alwasso and I'm just so excited for this opportunity and very thankful to Mrs. Atkins and Dr. Wilkins. Um, so really excited to get started. Thank you guys very much.
We're really glad you guys are here.
Thank you.
And I do want to point out, while we're talking about this, that um, that Miss Hutchinson, so she has been the assistant special editor, but she will now be our special editor, taking on that position to give him that role. So excited to see what she can do and she kind of transitions into that spot of being careful.